So my shipping thing this morning, if you're really worried.
No, probably not.
I'm doing it only because I lost.
The meeting.
Too much stuff on the news.
Okay, talk to you.
You got documents and so much.
No, they are. Okay, I can't wait. Because I get an older one. She just had her brain. People are thinking this is their line of days.
I think you know.
That I don't know. Forty-eight seventy-two hours. Present to our staff.
Do you have a concept of how long where before a future?
Yeah, two weeks.
Do they have a concept about how long you're planning to be? The meeting or how long?
But you know how that happens. I have no idea.
I don't know.
You want me to?
I can come up every once in a while.
We send people off to get monitors for our.
I don't know. I don't even know if I read my other.
I printed it.
Okay.
I know.
Because I didn't hear it from you. So if we don't notice anything else, it would be something else.
This is the same one.
Hello.
Hey. So you know what?
Yeah.
Were you giving it to campaign? Yeah, but maybe.
What do I have?
Can you text? What do we need to do?
Did you have any fun?
All right.
Oh, man. Hello. There is two issues, but we're okay. So you have to join in.
Can we revise this again?
Yeah.
Can I make sure I have the correct one?
Yeah, these are.
Okay, these are. All right. Okay. I have total work. Very tolerant. What's that?
Nope.
Excludes this one that was in our original.
Nice. I've been getting that all morning.
This could be wrong, so I hope we should go back.
Oh, life is good.
Okay. I will see if he can. Yeah, I'll go down and see if he can.
Oh, we're. You're not this though?
Did everybody sign this?
No. All right. All right.
I do receive. All right. I don't think any of you can compare this to this. We've been preparing for it.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So let me just clarify for folks that are here. There's been a little confusion about the meeting situation today. I know that the EMA had previously scheduled a meeting. That I don't believe this happening and that is not what this meeting is. So if anyone's here for the EMA version of this meeting, that is not this meeting. What we're here to talk about today are some county policies that we're looking at adopting in light of the public health emergency. Directors, we always like to see you here, but you are not required to be here at this meeting and we can follow up with you and intend to follow up with you shortly after the meeting. Especially based on the distancing recommendations that we're getting. We would even advise that you consider not being here unless you feel you need to be. So just wanted to be clear that we weren't requiring you to be here and we'll be communicating shortly after this meeting.
Is the EMA going forward then? Because we were meeting with Ryan about certain other kinds of things. Is we're not doing that now?
Ryan will be in touch shortly. And I just notified him that I think there was confusion about the one o'clock meetings today.
Okay.
So I would expect him to be in touch shortly.
Okay.
And our apologies for any confusion and thanks everyone.
Actually, Todd, you should probably stay.
I'm going to stay.
Yeah, because these could have financial impact.
You can come up.
On the county, so.
That's too close, but come on up.
Stay tuned.
Okay.
So do you need the Health Department to say this?
You know, we don't. I can only imagine how busy you are.
Just a little.
So, yeah. And thank you and sorry to you guys too.
No, that's okay.
Thanks for all the advice that you've given and no, we do not need you here, but we'll follow up and make sure you're in.
You know where you're at.
Yeah, we do.
We know where you are.
Yes.
I know where you live.
Yeah, that's true. Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much. Yeah, take care. Okay.
Yes. We're gonna start Janet with our emergency leave.
Yeah, Janet, let's go ahead and study the policy draft.
Yeah. The draft that Kathy sent out earlier today, I got feedback from just a few directors. So the changes that you see are just based on just the recommendations or questioning or whatever. So I just briefly just wanted to drop up language to add to the draft as someone talks about it.
Why don't we start with the emergency leave draft policy?
Yeah.
So what changes did you?
You'll see the changes in the in the blue.
The underscore blue. This is the one. It's got the underscore blue. We just need an announcement that there was a one o'clock emergency management meeting that this meeting is not. This is a commissioner meeting to talk about our internal policies, our county.
No, it's a vice.
Would you welcome to say?
Is there going to be that?
No, but you will be getting some guidance from Brian, I think shortly. I think he was confused and didn't realize people didn't know that meeting wasn't happening. So he'll be in touch soon and we're very sorry for the inconvenience.
Oh, inconvenience? No, you're just gonna go visit everybody else?
Stay healthy. Okay, so it's this one.
Yes, you'll see, the changes are the underlying blue. And the first bullet point underneath the public health emergency leave policy. And I actually had the same question. Are you, because the other bullet points are saying that a doctor's note is temporarily suspended. Yet this bullet point wasn't saying that. So we wanted to see, did you mean it not to say it or was it knocked out?
I didn't know that for paid administrative leave, there would be a doctor's note requirement. So that's why I didn't say it was suspended because I don't think there is such a requirement for paid administrative leave.
Or we could say.
Which bullet point did you want?
The first one.
No, no need for.
Under the public health emergency leave policy.
No need for doctor's note, just to make it clear.
Why don't we, Todd, you have the version I was connecting to, you don't have the underlines?
No, this is.
This is underscored.
Oh, you have the right one? Okay.
I mean, we could enter. Yeah, I mean, that's a good point.
Well, I didn't understand that sentence. So there's a period between administrative leave period. Employees who are not themselves sick are encouraged to stay home and do the work. Are they also getting the paid administrative leave?
Yes.
Beginning date.
In which case there wouldn't have been the requirement for the doctor's note in that line. But that should be added to the third bullet point. Well, it isn't there, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So on the first, the first bullet.
So we need to add the credit for performing work in that first one if you're going to encourage that.
I think on our copy, it does have that. It says employees who are not themselves are encouraged to do their work at home to the greatest extent possible as determined with their supervisor.
But you also need to be clear that you are not giving them eight hours paid leave and expecting them to work. You are giving them paid leave and rule of the hours they aren't working on.
I see what you're saying, Todd, and Janet has suggested a fix to that.
Yeah, the second little excerpt that's on your line. That should be in the first bullet point.
I had that statement to the third is fourth bullet points because when I thought about it, because if someone is off paid administrative leave, they're not using their leave like you're given. So because at first I had added that statement to that bullet point too. But then when I reread it, it's not because I'm saying that they would receive credit for performing work and it would reduce their number of hours used like sick leave or vacation. But they're not using sick vacations. They're using their.
Paid administrative leave is aborted. You are going to do a general entry awarding employee X, Y, Z, 24 hours, 48 hours, however many they need.
But they're not working.
That will need to be aborted.
But they're not working. I see what you're saying. If they're on paid administrative leave, they're not working, right? Because otherwise we would just pay them regular leave.
If that's what we mean to say, then and then that says employees who are not themselves sick are encouraged to do their work at home. So we are kind of given that option. If you're not sick and your husband's sick, you could work.
I could stay at home.
You could stay at home and work.
But I wouldn't be on paid administrative leave if I'm working.
Well, yeah, and that's, I think that's what's kind of confusing because we're gonna, we're gonna put you on paid administrative leave because your husband's sick or you're sick.
But if you're working at home, then do you get paid double?
No.
No, that's what he's saying and it doesn't need clarifying.
We need the language in there.
It needs to be clarified.
That you'll only get paid leave for the hours you aren't working.
Yes. Yeah, that's the small fix.
Yeah, you are sick with it when you use paid administrative leave and say how employees who are not themselves sick are encouraged to do their work at home as determined with their supervisor.
But this entire policy is voluntary, correct?
No.
Aside from, well, so if I have sick family members, I am to stay at home?
Yes.
Yeah. But if you can work from home, then arrange it with your supervisor. See, not everyone has that VPN and can work from home. That's, that's the issue.
Right.
And you may need to do caretaking depending on the extremity.
Yeah, you're not gonna be able to sit at your computer if you're home taking care of.
Yeah. So say they, they should do like a log, like we ask. I mean, some of the departments, I know like water resources, if they are required to work from home, they do a log and they log their workday and then they could attach that.
Yeah, and that's what I say in the other bullet points. About staying home with kids and then the other one is a free respiratory condition. So that's, I put that on there for that one.
That's in your third bullet point you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's focus on this first one.
First one, yeah.
So again, I don't think you need this sentence you're trying to add, Janet, because there is no doctor note requirement to take paid administrative leave. And I think as well, we don't want to be encouraging people who don't need to go to the doctor to go to the doctor. Because we're, I think, at that point in this health situation where people are not, everybody doesn't need to, to visit the doctor to satisfy some employment requirement. But I'm okay with adding employees who are not themselves sick are encouraged to do their work at home to the greatest extent possible as determined with their supervisor. An employee would not receive both paid leave.
Mm-hmm. Should keep a work log so that they can be credited for regular hours of work.
And is it? We had.
And administrative.
So if my son gets sick April 2nd, like how long is this leave for?
Well, that's the other thing I was gonna say.
Is it only until the third for now?
I think for now.
Or is it 14 days whenever someone gets sick? Like if my son gets better in three days, am I supposed to come back? That was the confusion is how much leave? Let's say my son's sick. I'm gonna go on paid administrative leave tomorrow. Is that? I mean, if this policy is in place, when am I coming back?
Wouldn't that have to be decided on a case by case basis? Todd, I mean, we don't want you, we don't want you coming.
Am I deciding when my son's better? I mean, I guess that's what I'm asking is what, are we just giving them three weeks period? Or are they to come back when the person is no longer ill? In which case, am I the determiner of that? Since I'm the determiner that they were sick to begin with. I mean, none of us are verifying that. To me, that's the only question that raises there is how much time are they getting? And how much time are they to be out? And if the same thing happens on the second, April 2nd, is it only that one day and they're to come back the third regardless?
Well, we're not there yet with April 2nd. I think we're trying to adopt a reasonable policy based on, like the April 3rd is how long, governed or divine as opposed to schools.
That we understand. But I'm saying if we're given two weeks, or are we given until they're better?
Well, I have Jaga County's. Jaga County does have verbiage in theirs and it's based on, like you just stated, Kathleen, the school closures. But there says, any employee who meets the criteria for a person under investigation or PUI under the Center for Disease Control guidelines during the next three week period shall self-quarantine and not come to work for 14 days from the date of exposure. If the employee has the capability, the employee shall work remotely from there. So they're, they're giving them like a 14 day window if they're, they feel that they've been exposed or they're showing signs of, of symptoms of the virus.
I think, Todd, that you would follow the recommendations that are coming, that are changing day by day, but you would have the flexibility under this policy to isolate for a 14 day period if you needed to. With the thought that we could extend this depending on where we are and slowing down the curve. And I also, I want us to be careful not to be trying to have the perfect policy today and not get anywhere.
No, but we have employees already who are gonna exercise this. We have employees with sick kids at home right now. Are they home for 14 days under paid leave? Or are they home until their ill person becomes better? I guess that's all I'm asking right now.
I think that based on the recommendation, if people have somebody that is sick at home, my understanding is that they should take a 14 day period. So they would stay for 14 days. And I understand that we're still within 14 days of April 3rd, but we may need to extend this. But for right now, that's contemplated in this time period.
Yeah, this is gonna have to be flexible.
No, it is, but as a director, I need to be able to tell my employee what they're on for and when they're coming back. I mean, we need, we need at least that specific. Are we telling them you're home for 14 days now on paid administrative leave?
Or should we say like the next three week?
I guess that's the only thing I'm trying to get. What, what do I tell employee?
Well, luckily.
This week, tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday.
You say, are you sick, employee, stay home. Do you have a family member that is sick, stay home.
And right now it's just an indefinite time.
Yes. I, I believe the recommendation is 14 days, but we have to keep track of how this is changing. So that's what I would tell. Luck, I mean, you have, you one employee or two?
Right, I'm just using you as an example, but I'm saying a director needs to know what their employee's out for and when they're expected to come back. Are we telling them we don't want to see you for 14 days?
Directors, other directors said that this policy worked for them and that they understood it. So we are asking directors alongside you to help us with their input and we'll keep factoring this in.
And do you see that being an issue at all, Janet, for you as the HR?
If it is, if it turns out to be, I'll just come back to you guys.
And we would just put a 14 day.
Yeah, there's no question about it.
If they've been exposed.
Because right now, we don't know. This is so really new to us. We're, we're just trying to put a policy together. But next week, the policy, I mean, have you changed already? Like just based on what we should have.
But I, I think that Todd's point, I mean, you can't turn the TV on, the radar on. Everyone's hearing the 14 days. That's why it might not be a bad thing to put something in there about the 14 days. But then again, you know, we can put that the policy obviously on the back is to be reviewed and adjusted or terminated at any time or subject to change as circumstances develop because we don't know.
We don't know.
Yeah.
So we do have a problem, Kathy, if we did put maybe the 14 days and only because that's what everyone's saying in the news and everything. And I think people are gonna be looking at that if they have a child that is sick, that they could take up to 14 days administrative leave. Otherwise, it's sort of open ended and I understand leaving it open ended to some degree, but for supervisors and managers who are trying to run departments.
Could you or Todd suggest actual language?
Well, no one else said trouble.
No, no, I'm, I just, I hear what you're saying. What should we write?
If at the end of that sentence, what if we put, so beginning date, April 3rd, employees who are sick or have a person in the household who is sick, cold or flu-like symptoms, will use paid administrative leave and stay home for up to 14 days or for at least 14 days.
If the sick person doesn't need to isolate beyond the 14 days is, it doesn't catch both of them.
Do you wanna look at that? That's what the Center of Disease Control has put out and Jaga put in their policy.
I just can see an employee, I mean, are they to call every day and say, am I still on administrative leave or am I still on administrative leave?
What if, yeah, what if we change that sentence? What if we just, yeah, kind of near, kind of take this sentence from Jaga and kind of combine in an R as make it one.
It's okay, just tell me.
But that's from the Center of Disease Control.
Yeah, the CDC, Jaga put out, the CDC guidelines during the next three, during the next three week period shall self-quarantine and not come to work for 14 days from the date of exposure. So what if we, what if we took that language and combined it with our first sentence?
What if we added a sentence? Because the first sentence is talking about two groups and say, an employee that has been exposed should follow CDC recommendations for self-quarantine. For 14 days self-quarantine.
Whether it be them or if they have a child at home, I mean, they're exposed to it then.
Well, is it, yeah. We're only doing it though if you've been exposed by someone in your home or yourself, not exposure if I was outside.
Well, if you're exposed, you're exposed.
If you're starting to develop symptoms, Todd, we do not want you to come out.
This policy says, an employee who is sick or has someone in their household who is sick.
So if you've been exposed in the public and you start developing symptoms, that means you're sick. So what's the issue?
Well, we will want to define that. If I'm.
I think that's why, I think that's why we should leave it somewhat vague as we're figuring this out rather than putting medical advice specifically in the policy. And I, I, I trust our employees and I trust our supervisors to work with us on this.
So we're adding 14 days?
Yes.
Yeah.
What if I just dropped up language, kind of using what you just said and then what's bringing it to me and then some extra questions?
Well, the thing is, we need to, let's come up with the language here. Because we need to adopt something to give guidance to employees.
I would agree.
So employees who have been exposed to someone who is sick should follow CDC recommended quarantine guidance. Do you want to put 14 day before quarantine, 14 day quarantine guidance? Just if that changes.
Good.
And you want that sentence after the word stay home?
I want that after supervisor, eliminate your sick note sentence.
And then do you want language added about?
So is that, are we done with the first bullet? Let's do it bullet by bullet.
Can we read the first bullet in Kathleen with what you added till we know?
Yes. Beginning. Are we insert today's?
Today, yeah.
What is today?
16.
Beginning March 16 through April 3rd. Employees who are sick or have a person in their household who is sick or cold or flu-like symptoms will use paid administrative leave and stay home. Employees who are not themselves sick are encouraged to do their work at home to the greatest extent possible as determined with their supervisor. Employees who have been exposed to someone who is sick should follow CDC recommended 14 day quarantine guidance.
Are we also adding the attention spreadsheet tracking work into that?
Does that go there or does it go down below?
Probably the third.
Okay.
Because we talked about employees that end up working.
Yeah, stay home.
They will get, their, their paid administrative leave would be reduced. So that they only, they work like two hours a day. They'd get paid admin time for six hours, but then their normal wages for two. So do we want a little blurb in that?
Let's do this. So before, after the first sentence, so the sentence that ends stay home, add a new sentence. These employees. And then add Janet's language below.
Okay.
Will receive credit for performing work during this time. Employees should track hours worked on a spreadsheet and attach it to their leave request, thereby reducing the amount of leave used.
Okay.
Okay. Can we move on to the next bullet?
The next bullet changes that one?
So I'm sorry, yeah, so the second one was the second one.
Yeah, and again, it was just adding clarity. If someone works, then they'll track their time work.
So that's a third, sorry. So second bullet, we're okay.
Yep.
Third bullet, we're good.
Okay, now for the fourth one. Fourth bullet would be the same.
Is that a word, immunocompromised?
Yes.
Is it?
Wow. Spell check doesn't want it to be one, but it is. Okay. Good with that one?
Yeah.
All right. This next bullet's important, I think, as we've discovered about the flexibility.
Are you good, Sabrina?
Yep.
Only reason why that very last bullet, that very last bullet. Um, the only reason why, that very last bullet, that was on my original draft and then it was removed on this draft. The only reason, and talking with Jenna and Susan this morning, the purpose of that one that was added was because right now we have current people that are off sick for surgeries or whatever, whatever, I mean, there's other reasons why someone is off right now. As well as there's other people that have scheduled vacation, that truly had scheduled vacation during this time. We just wanted to just clarify and let them know, like, you're still, you're still off having surgery time.
Yeah.
Yes, we're still off, you're still off having maternity leave, surgery time, whatever. It's not, it will not be coded paid admin leave unless.
Why would that be unclear?
Well, because we say if you're sick, if I'm sick, let's say I have cancer and I need a surgery, cancer, I'm sick. Do I suddenly get fourteen days busy now instead of using my sick time, in which case I get to be out that much longer?
But sick with cold or flu-like symptoms.
And asked specifically do with the COE coming.
I mean, I think we just want to double clarify that and make sure you're confused when I say you're, if you're off.
If you're off. Cause I don't want it to seem like we're assuming, like, I wanna, I want to give our employees the benefit of the doubt. I also don't wanna make it seem like if they were scheduled to take vacation during this period, they have to go through with that vacation. We may not want that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, I think we, Jenna maybe had a vacation scheduled, didn't she?
She ended up being canceled because she was going.
Right, and we don't want her to feel like, hey, you must go on vacation.
But if she was, if she was still leaving work that last week in March, I think I would expect her to still take vacation time.
Yes. Yeah. If she changes her plans, then she doesn't have to work.
I'm just being canceled now. And so she's, she's taking.
But I don't want her to think, I don't want employees out there to think they have to go forward with their vacations.
You could say if employees take already scheduled time off, it will be deducted per the manner requested.
I mean, this is the language, it's an emergency leave, um, I'm sorry, um, the emergency weather leave policy. I just changed leather, changed to public health.
I mean, we can remove it, I think.
I get it, so like, if you're on vacation during a snow emergency and we close the offices, you don't get.
If you're on a snow day, you're still taking vacation.
And I totally get that in that circumstance, I just think this circumstance is different. And it, I, I don't wanna encourage, I don't know, it just seems a little different.
I mean, we can take it out and then if we have issues, we can.
Yeah, I don't know if I like the wording of it, cause it makes it sound like you're gonna get charged no matter what.
Yeah.
Irregardless of the public health emergency.
To employees who use previously scheduled time shall have deducted in the manner as requested, as originally requested.
Say that slow, Todd.
Employees who use previously scheduled leave time will continue to have it deducted in the manner as originally requested.
So slower, who previously scheduled leave time. Well.
Have it deducted in the manner previously requested.
Yes, I do deduct my last week of hard job because I'm not going.
Just needs closed. Right, so many people are gonna have.
I'm not going anywhere.
And we may need the people who were gonna be on vacation if other people are around.
Right, so are we taking away that bullet and just adding Todd's, cause then I don't know what he said.
I do, I have it. Employees, yeah, we're removing the, except for the warrant employees. Yes. We're adding, we're keeping a extra bullet, but we're changing it.
Just the verbiage of it.
Do you want me to say it for you as well?
Yeah.
Employees, now this is like a quiz, who use previously scheduled leave time will have it deducted in the manner.
Previously requested.
Previously requested.
But we're also not telling them, you can't take your vacation now because of this.
Should we add like a, in consultation with your supervisor, in case we're, you know, on the vacation thing? Let's add that.
You know, that should be a known, I would think, that's common sense, but I mean.
But if it's already approved, some people are like, it's approved, you know, now we've kinda gotta revisit some of this stuff. In light of.
All right, so what is that bit of language are you, do you want?
Again?
No, of the previously requested.
Are you adding?
In consultation with your supervisor.
Someone?
Yeah. Okay, on that.
Okay.
Policy is subject to change as circumstances develop. All right, let's work at, look at the temporary telework policy.
And this one, I removed that sentence because I originally had it in my draft. But Ryan had emailed over the weekend saying that FEMA is reimbursing overtime for overtime provisions. So therefore, and he didn't feel that that sentence needed to be in our, in the telework policy. Because the employees worked over FEMA saying we're eligible for reimbursement.
And I think we have to meet what, a threshold and then we get reimbursed, what, seventy-five percent?
Well, that's where you guys need to decide, I originally get in still, I mean, if an employee didn't need overtime before this, they still don't need overtime if they're working from home. The, the reason we get into trouble with telework is technically if I look at my email and I'm a non-exempt employee, I worked. And if I look at my email at six o'clock, you're supposed to pay me for that. And if I've already worked eight hours, you now owe me overtime for that fifteen minutes. And what we're trying to say is you're not instructed to do that, nor are you permitted to do it outside of the hours we want you to work. Now, all the directors have the ability to approve overtime as it's needed. But what we're trying to say is the employee themselves do not have the discretion
To just do.
To do non-work hours. That, that when you're working from home, you're still following the policies of you're working during the day that your supervisor has instructed for you. That's where we get into the issue.
So that's why it's emphasized, should not work outside their working hours.
And I don't think including overtime is not permitted. I think the wording of that was just trying to say the employees do not have to self-select overtime.
Jean also had a question about that one. He was actually saying that that statement, that the should not work outside the working hours or should not work overtime, would not work for the water resources staff because they must be able to operate.
Well, they already have their exemption.
So he, he had recommended language in addition to, in addition to this one. He was just saying, application of the no overtime provisions shall not apply to departments delivering essential services. So he recommended the sentence to be added at the end of that.
So that doesn't have to be approved before, or is that what he's saying?
It could just say should not work outside the working hours unless approved by their supervisor.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, you just need, it all has to be pre-approved. And the supervisor just have to sign off on it. Okay, so Janet, pre-read that once you get done.
I'm worried about including this and messing up any emergency funding that we could receive. I mean, Ryan's, I thought Ryan had a good point. And then I also worry too, I don't wanna get into a place where we have an employee who's, you know, in the water resources department, making sure the water plant's operating correctly and they feel like they have to stop what they're doing because of what we're writing here. So.
Yeah, cause I thought it'd been there and then I removed it because Ryan said it and then it was, it was back in. So then I removed it because Ryan said that what would cover it.
Tell me Jean's, what Jean proposed again, what was it? And he, he was, he wanted the provision removed?
It, it was not removed.
He wanted to add.
This to add, application of the no overtime provisions shall not apply to departments delivering essential services.
And I think that's just common sense again, if something is going on and they, they need you to do something, you don't just stop because it's overtime.
But, but if we send clerical or staff home that can work from home, there's no need that they have to look at their emails at eight PM and get overtime. I'm fine with leaving it in and adding what Jean says because essential staff is gonna be like jobs and family services. They're essential, they cannot shut down.
We have a lot of essential staff.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
To run our operations.
Can you say that again?
So you wanna add Jean's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so the end of that bullet, after work hours, will be a new sentence. Application of the no overtime provisions shall not apply to departments delivering essential services.
Yeah. So Todd, don't be looking at your stuff.
Well, I, again, I would.
Well, he's exempt, so we can't.
That's more limited, that's more limited than just saying unless approved by their supervisor.
Yeah, but I think if you put the essential in there, I mean.
It's different.
It's different.
But you've removed people is what I'm saying. You've removed people from it.
Or essential staff without pre, maybe we put peripurble from their supervisor, but then.
I worry about getting supervisors down.
And that's the thing, their, their bugs are gonna start blowing up.
Because if you're in the midst of something, I don't want you to have to stop and call your supervisor or whatever.
And what if a supervisor.
Our original policy is allowed for that, I mean, our current policy is that you don't work overtime unless approved by a supervisor. But Jean has policies that work around that, so I don't know that we're circumventing those policies. I think you were just trying to get clear that working from home still entails.
Preapproval.
That you can only work within these particular timeframes.
Unless.
Otherwise, we're gonna find ourselves paying for workers' work. When an email shows up that it was sent at eight o'clock, we owe that worker fifteen minutes of work?
Yeah.
Unless they're exempt, that's true.
Yeah.
So working from home and working whenever you feel like it are very different things.
So you're thinking employees are gonna work whenever they feel like it and then try to get overtime?
Right now, our employees, most of them either don't or don't even know that they can check their emails online, for example. We're now asking them to do that. We're now saying, I want you to go home and I want you to log in and check your emails.
Well, we're asking them to do that during your.
But I only want you to do that from eight to four thirty.
Yeah, and they're supposed to log everything, so. They don't check them after quitting time now, so why would we expect them?
But they said.
During regular work hours.
Yeah.
And right, yeah, right above it does say, those approved to work from home temporarily shall check their email and work on tasks during their regular work hours.
Yeah, so that's fine. I think we're just logging, it's giving me a headache.
That's fine, that's fine. I was just telling you where it comes from, but, and that, that's true from back when we first looked at telecommuting policies. I was saying, you have the danger of somebody replies to an email at eight o'clock, you owe them fifteen minutes of work?
It is important that they, we have the policy about the log, I think is, is important. Whereas before telecommuting, they just got to work from home and we didn't really track or it was the honest system and then we got in trouble.
Well, I know, well.
Janet, that blue is crossed out here. Is that because you think we've stated it before, employees who are not exempt from the Fair Labor Standard Act?
That's what we're talking about, yeah.
No, I.
Well, the sentence above that does talk about during the regular work hours, so are we leaving that in then, that's in blue?
Yes.
Yes, and adding that.
We're leaving blue, adding Jean's statement.
Okay.
Now, our employees are capable of working from home without a county-owned device. So is that a caveat or not?
I see, I thought Lloyd sent us something that said that they do not want us accessing our county emails and stuff from a personal device. I thought it had to be on county equipment.
VPN has been in county equipment. Where we could access our email.
VPN needs to be on county equipment, VPN is not email. And VPN is not Microsoft Word. I can save my files to the OneDrive, I can work from home on my personal computer and I can access all my county business via Office 365. Which allows a great number of employees to do a great deal of work, none of which is on a county-owned device. So if we keep that restriction in that it can only be on a county-owned device, then we are limiting the ability of our employees to work from home because we have very, very few of those. In order for me to use county-specific programs, for example, in my department, we have SSI, which looks at accounts, munis. Those you have to VPN in for, in which case you are required to use a county-owned device. And there are a very limited number of employees who will be able to do that work. Number one, we don't have that many devices, but number two, the system only supports thirty to forty at the same time. And we wanna save those thirty.
Is that county-wide?
Yeah, we wanna save those thirty or forty slots for the people that absolutely need to be using them. So the question is, if I'm gonna send, for example, Joan home, I don't want her VPN-ing in. I don't need her to do that work, I would like her to read her emails. So if I have a question on a billing issue, I can send it and get a reply right back. But that would not be via a county-owned device.
Okay, so she can get her county emails on her regular phone?
Correct, her own computer, any computer, any phone can access via the Microsoft 365 login. And same thing, if you save, if you're working on a spreadsheet and you save it to the OneDrive rather than the county's S-Drive or wherever you save, you can access that when you log in.
Remotely.
So that's what the third bullet is doing.
It's limiting right now that I couldn't have them do it unless it's a county-owned device.
No, it's personal devices.
Using their, okay.
Or outside, using their own.
Using their own personal devices.
Information, okay, those employees are deemed eligible to work offsite in county-owned. Those employees would communicate with IT to gain access to VPN information and work with employees. And the IT, to assist employees who are deemed eligible to work offsite using their own personal devices.
That would be like Joan.
Yeah.
Like your hypo.
I was taking that second caveat, to me, it was confusing.
Yeah, this, in this language.
Cause your.
Actually came from Lloyd.
Sorry, sorry.
Oh, it did come from Lloyd, so that's good.
He get, they had a verbal telework policy and telmage, he couldn't find that actual written, but he.
Then my other question on this policy, which differs from this one. Is this applicable to any employee the director wants to place on it?
That is how I think we should try to move forward. I think that we should empower our directors with these two policies.
To do what they need to do.
To, to, to work it through their departments. And if questions arise or they need additional, like, authority from us.
IT support or something, yeah.
We'll deal with it, but that's the general outline.
And are we encouraged to get our employees out of the building?
Yes.
And onto something like this if we can?
Yes.
And is this, is this, if I wanna put my employee on telework, do they not have to worry about this, using vacation time to be home with a sick child? If, if it's a happy coincidence, am I allowed to use this policy to put them on work leave so that they're still working?
Yes.
But I understand, cause I know it keeps getting asked, are we gonna shut the county building down? And the answer this time would be no, because Kelly Jo has sixty or sixty-two essential employees that have to work.
Right, right. And I think too, I mean, and other elected officials, you know, need their access to the public as well. But I, I think it's something we'll keep evaluating. But I also think the third item to discuss too is, is our first effort at trying to encourage the public to do things via phone and limit personal interaction as much as possible, which Kelly Jo is also doing at direction that she's getting from the state. at direction that she's getting from the state.
The folks that come in and make payments to you from the.
So that's my next question, is when are directors going to have the opportunity either to talk with you or get their answers regarding what services would need suspended if we send these workers home? Does that happen today, tomorrow? Are we waiting until Thursday? I mean, I sent you my list, but I need the board to decide on what level you want me to operate at. I can operate at any level. You decide.
My understanding, Todd, is you have, do you not have authority yourself to make some of those decisions? And what you don't have, under your judgment, I feel like we'd be happy then to give you that direction.
Right, I guess. Is that coming today at some point? Cause I'm not the only director with that question.
Well, I guess.
How are we gonna present to you what we would like to do and get the answers so that we can tell our employees what we're doing? I mean, the question, are we gonna suspend payments at the window or not? I don't feel that's a decision that I should make independently with commissioners. If you allow us to do that, then I can do this, this, and this. Are you going to allow me to shut our phone line down and not take messages? I don't think that's a decision I should make independently. It should be with the commissioners. So when are we gonna be able to work out those details so that I do know what I can tell my employees?
Well, I think that we should, I think for now, these policies are a lot, especially for large departments, to implement. And then I think now that you have the guidance here to know, you know, what we're, where we're willing to go with non-essential onsite employees telework. I think with what you can do within your own authority, like Kelly Jo is doing, for example, do what you, based on these policy, temporary policy changes can do, but don't feel you have the authority or want.
Or have to do.
Or want the agreement of us come back at our next meeting with a specific list of those contemplating these two policies. So now that you have guidance, Todd.
Yes, I have. These are weekend. I still have that question. I guess here's where I'm coming from. I understand the policies and I've had time to digest them. I have two employees that don't necessarily need to be in this building being exposed. We can get our work done other ways. However, there are two huge caveats to that. The first one being, we need to not answer the phones. If you are not willing to let us shut off the phones, then I need both my employees here.
Can calls be forwarded to your numbers?
While I sent that to you, I would not ask my employees to call a customer from their home phone because I know I have covered for Denise and now I have a whole list of customers from Portage County who call my work line directly because they got it off their caller I D.
Yeah.
And that's okay because it's still a work phone. It's just annoying for me. I don't think that's appropriate for them to have happen on their home phone.
Could you block the phone? Could you block the number?
Is there a cost to that?
Yeah.
No, dial star six seven and call.
So we want them.
And then it's a blocked call.
Yeah, cause I would hate, I mean, that's gonna impact a lot of other businesses if we, and people are gonna freak out over that if they can't get to you.
And that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. I will tell you that if we have to answer the phones, I will keep both my employees here.
Okay, so maybe they're essential, so they would stay. Say they're essential to your department.
Here's the thing, ninety-nine of the calls are people asking if they need to pay it, but they're not essential calls to answer. I guess that's.
That's why I wonder, could we, could we think about this a little more? I understand it's a lot right now, but could we perhaps.
Have it go into voicemail. Someone check it every day remotely. Could you check voicemail then?
And then call back star six seven. And then everybody's getting answered. But I would think we have to be creative in light of what's happening.
But you still try to service people the best that we can.
I like that idea of people leave a message. Either, either call, either call forward.
Well, I, I think.
No, I know, I understand. The key is, so we get different types of calls. One type of call is homeowners who just bought a new property and they want their account put in the nickname. Okay? I don't have to take that call this week, next week, or the week after. The truth is, if the bill goes on somebody else's name, it doesn't really matter. However, if I'm going to take that call, I want to be able to go into SSI right then and make the change rather than writing a big old note and then Sunday coming in.
I'm gonna stop you right there. That going into staying in someone else's names for two, three weeks, however long, that is a big deal.
Not for us it isn't. The name on the account does not matter.
Well.
Because we change possession for time of transfer.
It is though for the person responsible for the bill. You're creating a big mess for that.
Not in terms of their liability to us. I know what you're saying, but so, it's fine. We can talk later in the afternoon Thursday if you want.
Yeah, tie it through and, but we've got a suggestion. I mean, if you.
What I tell you though is if we're answering the phones, there are a lot of calls where it's simply easier to deal with them by being able to get into the software and making the change. And they can't do that from home unless they have VPN and we don't wanna give them VPN because we don't wanna type essential slots.
But I think the question is not necessarily, it is easier, it's, is it essential? And that's what I think you have to think over. Of course, it's easier to be sitting at your office desk and have everything at your fingertips, but.
Well, when are they gonna make the others?
You could work these processes out and think of a possible temporary plan. Like you do all of the S S., whatever it is, inputs on Friday. And someone comes in to do it then, but that they don't have to be here all forty hours. I mean, just thinking through these flexible scenarios.
That are exactly the same as what we are used to, but still work.
I'll come back Thursday. I'll keep my employees on the clock until Thursday.
Well, I, I think, Todd, with your department being so small, that's where it's gonna be hard not to be deemed necessarily as an essential department because you don't have a big flux of staff or, you know, you're limited. It's like H R.
And just so, just so you guys are aware, this morning we, we met, you know, Jen and Susan and I. And yeah, they're actually working two days a week and then the other ones working two other days. And we're gonna, we may reduce it down to one week, but um, as a list, just for now, you know, they picked their two days and they thought, just based on their current job duties, their busiest days. And then I said, you go, you need to go up a day or work three days, that's fine. But right now we're two days and we have a plan. I just, I mean, that's what, that's what we decided to do temporarily until.
And if you have to adjust it too, if it's not working, then you adjust it.
One day's not good and another day's better. And like, just, you know, we're all talking to each other. I mean, well, I'll probably be here all five days.
Yeah.
And I know you and I talked about something to deal with munis. Like you said, one employee has a smaller interaction, but important.
Yeah.
But that you maybe for now, as the onsite employee, could take that over.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Those type of temporary changes, I think, are what with this structure, we're asking directors to think through in their departments.
Be creative on how we can, you know, reduce the chance of the virus, but yet still service people that need it.
Like our application table, for example. Like we moved out right in front of the elevator because we want, we would hope that the people that physically have to turn in a hard application, because they don't have access to email or fax or whatever. We moved in front of the elevator so soon they get off the elevator, return an application, there's a basket right there. So hopefully they use it instead of coming up to the countertop and something, they, they go right past the counter and all of a sudden they're in our, in our offices. So we're gonna try to stop that and kinda.
Well, and I, I think especially with smaller departments, they've gotta be careful of letting one or two employees go home and work or just go work from home and then everyone else being stuck here, you know, or saying, you're not an essential employee, you need to go home. Like you said, Todd, you need to analyze it and figure out how you can still try to service the public the best you can.
Well, my, my recommendation is my employees stay. If that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, if you're, if that's how you feel, then that's.
I would encourage you to think that through a little bit more, cause it sounds to me, based on what you're saying, there are some things you could do to potentially have more telework temporarily in your department. I encourage you to think differently more.
Okay, okay, it's okay. I forgot. Joanna, she had a question about, I hate to go back to emergency leave policy, but I wanna make sure I bring this up. She had emailed, I'm gonna send, I don't know, pop on this email, just asking about if the board would consider amending a donation of sick leave policy to help those employees during this time.
I am hesitant on that because I feel like this is the type of situation where everyone may need their leave and where newer employees may not have the ability to get someone to donate. And I, I think this is not the type of circumstance where donating leave gets us, gets us through.
Cause everyone could be impacted. Whereas if it was a person that, you know, had a hardship because they have to be off or sometimes they have surgery or something, what is our current policy, just to reiterate, for the sick leave? If you wanna donate to sick leave to someone else?
Has to meet certain criteria. Has to be criteria almost.
The sickness itself has to meet, COVID doesn't.
Yeah. COVID doesn't meet this?
It does not meet right now, but we could down the road.
That was correct.
That's the only time I knew.
But then again, people really aren't, people, if they're sick, they're not, you're, they're using paid admin. They're not using sick.
And we've got this admin thing in place, so I think we look.
Yeah, yeah, I think let's hold off on that suggestion. It doesn't mean.
Right, yeah.
We can't look at it again.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Cause we can definitely amend, just temporarily amend the definition of the critical illness. Absolutely. That was just the, that was the third director that had just something.
All right, one more item. Social distancing. Who moved our chairs today? That was good. Was that Amy?
Amy?
I feel like we shouldn't start with the word but.
But and efforts to align. All American county officers are open to the public?
No.
But? Now, but and efforts to.
We shouldn't start with the public.
Okay. Do in efforts?
I think it, yeah, I think that's what it means, in efforts.
I think the first one says they all Portage County offices are open to public.
Comma.
And that's why the but and efforts.
If you wanna leave the but in.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, but in efforts, okay, the line, that's good. Okay, thank you.
I think where's this going? Is this gonna go on our website?
Everywhere.
He had, he was recommending we post it and that we communicate it to the media, to on social media. His Portage prepares stuff.
On our website too.
His emergency, his lists, which are pretty extensive.
And then did he say something about getting into I T. to put on the county website?
I think so, yes.
Are we still?
Probably.
Are we still taking cash payments here?
For now, I think we are.
That's something that your department oversees, taking cash payments here.
Yeah.
I mean, if you propose suspending that and we don't need to do it, I'm certainly open to suspending that temporarily.
They have the Dropbox.
As long as they have, yeah, options.
They have the Dropbox and we'd have to get that message out that, you know, they're taking in-person payments, but they're more than welcome to utilize our Dropbox. And then you check it, like you do now.
Is that gonna put a hardship on your department?
Not to not take them. I just need to know what.
Well, we would support you not taking, you know, if that's what.
In-person.
Yeah, cause I think the less traffic we have on our floor.
The better. So how is he gonna get that message out? Let me just have to post it.
When they come to the counter, we will tell them.
Well, no.
Yeah, post signs.
I don't think it's the only way. I mean, I think posting signs.
Is someone at the treasurer's office? Are they, are they taking in-person?
A blip in the paper might help, saying we're no longer taking in-person payments.
I mean, we could put a sign there at the counter.
But I think something in the paper would be good too. And on our website.
And here's the other thing. I think you should also put, like, see if you can put some type of a envelope or something that can put envelopes in there cause people are not gonna have envelopes and they don't like to just throw it in there. You know, sort of like a Nike drop, have like envelopes that they can put in there, put their payments in, especially if they're paying cash. I would never do cash, but people do it all the time.
Specifically says don't put cash.
Yeah, okay. And then emphasize that.
Do you have a lot of people coming up here giving cash?
Yes.
Do you?
Uh, you know, four or five a day.
Amy says yes too. She sits up there.
I mean, to me, that's not a lot, but it's.
Well, it's, yeah.
Well, it's.
And we have a lot of people come and pay with the coupon, which could have been mailed. I think I put in my list, if the commissioners would suspend the late fees, that would help because we could tell people go home and mail it. You know, people come rushing up and ask me, I wanna get paid.
I think we should definitely do that.
Yes.
You know, those are some things that.
And to say, and for your convenience, we will have, you know, you can put it in the Dropbox.
I can come back Thursday. We're just operating as still Thursday.
Okay. Let us know. What else? Is there anything else on here?
It'd be nice if these graphics were a little clearer.
Yeah, they're a little closer.
But I think the language is okay.
I like that they have all the numbers listed.
Do you think if you made it on one, one piece, you think it'll fit on that eleven by seventeen larger, large piece of paper and then post it? And then maybe it'd be better if you do that?
I wonder, I wonder if Glenn has the capabilities of maybe like putting it like poster size, so it's a little more noticeable out of the print shop.
Do you know if he has this kind of capabilities?
Leslie, Leslie can print the.
Yeah, she can.
On her printer, which is actually where Glenn will probably go. I don't know that he has a printer anymore. We can ask.
But it would be nice if it was all on one page. We would have him in the.
Yeah. So that's why. He could have made it two pages, just, just the sake of showing it to us, do you know what I mean?
Do you, do you wanna see if, if we can get him printing? You know, Ryan's. Still trying to recover too. Cause it would be nice to have a long one. And then, Todd, can you check with Joanne to see if maybe we can put like an envelope or something out there with envelopes in there? Like a hole or something so that people could.
Oh, we can put envelopes up here at the counter. I don't think there's a central holder that wouldn't get wet, you know, I mean, protected on the Dropbox.
What if we had to go get like one of those realtor tubes and it's sticking on the side that's plastic?
But may wanna check with Joanne so she could order that, so that we have that. Can I ask you guys, I, I wonder if, I'm not sure every director has the same. Obviously, you have a lot of questions that you want us to consider and, or need us to consider, Todd, and if that's the case across the board, maybe we should schedule on Wednesday to come in so we're dealing with it sooner rather than waiting until Thursday. So that would give you guys two days to have the policies and then do what you can do with them as they are and then bring any questions that you can't resolve yourself Wednesday.
Should we have the directors have an appointment to come up here rather than everybody at once? Is that what I'm thinking?
Yeah, maybe have Amy stand over. Amy? Yeah, maybe have Amy spend over, Amy?
And if they don't need it, it's fine, if they do.
You can at least put a notice up.
Yeah, they don't have to feel they have to come if they don't have any questions or anything, just.
It was like a future in Bill, you know, none of, none of the employees are going to go, so they wouldn't have.
Did Ronnie talk to you about the staff attendance email?
Yes, about the what?
Did Ronnie talk to you guys about the staff attendance email that he wanted HR to send out? He had asked if I was sending out an email out to elected officials and department heads just every Monday morning, send us the number of call offs. I don't, I don't, we don't want names, we don't know when, the reason why they're calling off. And he just wanted to kind of check to see, you know, is, is this illness having any reflection on the attendance? So he was, he was just asking if the departments can send us, you know, we have five call offs this week. And he had.
I think he needs that for his emergency management duties. I think that's why he's asking, and perhaps it's funding related as well.
Yes, it is.
That was.
It is funding related, yeah.
So I think that's fine to go ahead and do.
Based on what he told me, and then I was going to have Jenna just, you know, do a Excel spreadsheet list in all the departments, how many employees they have, and then the call offs. I don't know if he said daily or weekly, I think it's only weekly.
I'm fine with his recommendation on that. So on Wednesday. Do you want to say ten AM? What are we?
Let me look and see if I got anything on that there.
I don't have anything, so my stuff's all getting canceled.
Well, that's, that's, that's pretty open.
Yeah, everything's been canceled, what do I have?
Right.
What time do you want to do?
I could do nine or ten. I wonder, starting a little later, give people a little time in the morning in case that helps them.
Nine?
Let's, let's say ten.
Okay.
That's okay.
Did that meeting get canceled on the eighteenth, Vicki?
Yes.
Assuming, have we canceled the, um, public hearings for recycling? Probably need to do that.
I think we should, I know that Bill was planning to discuss that at his solid waste.
A waste.
Meeting, and I think he has language he wants to put before us.
Okay.
And we're okay.
We can do it Thursday?
Oh, yeah. Do it then.
Okay. Okay, so the eighteenth at ten o'clock.
Todd, did I give you enough time? Okay, okay.
Time to be early on, I don't know.
So, so my question, yeah, why do you are so needy? Do you want, as far as these policies and adopting them for use, what do you need from us?
I'm just feeling like, I'm going to go back and make the changes. Really just, do you want the, do you want the policy sent to just elected officials and the department heads?
Well, it's not just sent, we want them in effect immediately.
Right, so the meeting happens today.
Passing it, yeah.
And then effective today.
Today's date.
So pass them as.
Journal entry.
Journal, journal entry. I think I have another question.
Implementing the attached emergency leave policies for a period.
I think we all, Ryan also wanted us to pass this.
Mm-hmm, yeah, he wants that out. Another thing that I think we need to talk about also is if, and there's all kinds of rumors flying out there that the president might enact the Stafford Act where he makes us all quarantine, it's all quarantine for fourteen days. Some of the provisions and the, the COOP plans I saw can cover that, but I'm not sure, I didn't get through all of them to see what would we do if that was the case. Does everyone have identified, I mean, most of them have identified they're essential employees? So Todd, that's something you might want to think about as well.
Well, that's, I guess that's what I put in my plan, is there's different levels of shutdown or whatever you want to call it, that my department can go through. And that's your pleasure as to what level we operate at.
What we want to do away with, what we want to allow.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's, all of my functions could be delayed, at least for a certain extent, you know what I mean? Um, but it means, like again, phones and those type of things, the public would not have access. Um, so those are the issues, I think, where we all need to be ready for each level of. You know, what if the governor orders this building shut down? How does JFS still provide the services they're required to do? And does it mean the building's partially open in which case we've got JFS people in this building with no one else on any of the floors? I mean, those are all issues.
Or could we move them to Johnson Family, or to the J Center that's going to be closed?
Right, and just put signs to go there, I mean, those are.
Ultimate.
Yeah, and they may have that worked out, but.
They're pretty good about having it, because it comes from a state or third. Okay, so we need to make a motion for journal entry to approve the temporary public health emergency leave policy for COVID-19 as revised and amended today.
Second. We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicki.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then we'll make a motion to approve the teleconference. The temporary tele, oh, teleconference, temporary telework policy. Effective March, oh, I think it's today.
Three sixteen, yeah, three sixteen. Four hundred and thirty, I must say, March twenty.
Okay, effective three sixteen, twenty twenty.
Second. We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicki.
Yes.
Another thing, Janet, when you're finishes up, can you make sure after the dates, it just says blank through April third, can you make sure you put the year after it?
Uh huh, yeah. Unless we are taking that board but out of the way.
Yeah, so, do we need, we don't need a journal entry, do we need to approve this?
I think Ryan wants us to.
Have it on record, okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve a journal entry approving the Portage County public notice, COVID-19.
Second, we'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicki.
Yes.
Yes.
So we can approve the policy. All one email boxes or elected officials and departments?
Well, currently only applies to your directors. We could copy the elected officials to give them a sample work they're doing.
Yeah, I would send it to, but staff, staff want to know.
Yeah.
Would you want your directors to communicate that to staff, or would you put that out and have the staff interpret it as I see it?
Then we'll say, I, we do not have a disheaval list, just the BOC employees. It's either all county or I send to BOC directors and tell them to.
Then let's send to BOC directors and make, but, make sure they get it out to their employees, because I know employees are looking for guidance on this. And then.
Send it to the elected officials.
Yeah, also send to them and just say.
As a courtesy to say, this is our.
This is the policy that the commissioners adopted today. And some of them know about it, have been asking about it, some of them. Maybe, you know, hopefully it helps them as well.
Okay.
So I think a motion to the board.
Second, we'll call Amy.
Yes.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.